Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mayor Vader. It's my privilege to officially begin this scheduled city council meeting, which I would declare called to order at 6:02 PM. And would now invite our city clerk to conduct our roll call.
Andy Wilson. I think he saw the note.
He stopped by, actually, and asked to be excused. He injured his back while he was fishing this afternoon.
Oh.
Yes. He slipped getting out of the boat and injured himself.
No, no, no. I heard it was he was reeling in this huge, huge fish.
You'd think he would have, but he did say that two of the party members on the boat had each caught thirty-five and seven. But he didn't, unfortunately. So he could have embellished his story a bit, but chose not to. Anyway, I told him his absence would be excused.
Okay. Jason Daley.
Here.
Joe Schei.
Present.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Ruth Krier.
Present.
And Mayor Ken Smith.
Also present. So we do have quorum, so we can officially proceed with our Pledge of Allegiance. And we invite all of you to please rise. And Jason, can we ask you?
Sure. The Pledge of Allegiance should apply of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll proceed now with the mayor's report. I'll just start from the top and then add a couple very quickly additional items. Number one is update on playground equipment. If you haven't heard, I will confirm that Pastor Durham had to call me with considerable chagrin because he had just been informed by individuals who have the knowledge and authority to confirm what they told him, that the playground equipment is older than was constructed before 2010, and that that equipment, according to federal law, once it's deconstructed, it cannot be acquired by a public entity because of potential carcinogenic chemicals in the plastics that were used to construct those. Private person could purchase them, but a public entity cannot. And so, and they can't be gifted or rebuilt in a public setting. That is federal law. So it essentially shoots that golden goose out of this guy. The aluminum infrastructure, however, for the pavilions might be available, but Pastor Durham was not hopeful excessively, and that because the board that would make the decision would probably opt, he thought, to keep it for potential salvage or, you know, scrap aluminum, just to recoup some of the, some funds from that project. And he said he would call me back if something positive developed, and I've not gotten a phone call from him. So, so much for that. So we're back to where we were two months ago. Anyway, the second item, update on our audit calendar. You should have a sheet of paper.
That's the budget calendar.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Our budget calendar will impact our audit calendar, but the, they were going to have begun the audit this week, but for unknown bureaucratic reasons, they've asked to postpone that audit. And it would begin next week?
On the 26th, then two Mondays, not this Monday, but then next Monday.
Okay, in two weeks. It won't have any impact on this year's budget, and we did decide to do just the one budget. So that is still going to happen.
Is this the audit for the water?
No, this is our city audit and would be for the finance.
It is an accountability audit. It basically checks our internal controls and makes sure that we're following all the rules.
But that doesn't count as one of the audits that we need?
It is part of it.
It is part of it, okay.
It will be had. It's a two-part audit.
We need both an accountability audit and a financial audit together. That makes one full audit, but they don't do them at the same time unless we specifically request it.
Okay.
They should do one one year and one another year, so.
So, long story short, we're one step closer to getting a water man.
Yep. As soon as we complete that audit with no findings.
Mm-hmm, yes. So, fingers crossed. Another item that occurred to me was that I should probably report that the logging that's been taking place on the north side of our city limits by Carson Palmer, the timber owner, has been completed, and that our engineer has inspected the streets as was required, and that he is going to prepare a report on the 16th assessing whatever damage he perceives has resulted from that logging operation. So, just wanted to make you aware of that. I've inspected it myself, and I couldn't discern that there was much damage, if any, but the engineer would have a more professional perspective on that. The other item is that we, as part of our agenda, item one, you'll note that we're going to have, invite your action on the nomination for the park board. And this individual has donated six shrubs for use by the city and wherever it deems it most appropriate. And right now, we're going to turn those shrubs over to the newly constituted park board, and maybe with some of your previous expertise on that. I'm thinking of Mike. We're thinking it would work in Warden Park on the fence line between, on the north side of the park to create a natural barrier between that property owner and the park users.
Well, I know they've been talking about putting the cedar pins along there for a couple of years now.
Quite a while.
I know that they, when I was over there, we changed to...
A chain link?
Chain link, just because of rotting, and, I mean, once you put it up, it's up. But nothing was ever totally finished.
Yeah, but I know that they were thinking more of a privacy kind of issue.
Yeah, it was going to be chain link, and then Arboretum on the, on the park side of it for the privacy.
Hmm. Well, we're not entirely sure what these shrubs are, but didn't we speculate there was some kind of decorative plum?
Decorative plum or decorative cherry is what Diane, who's our resident...
And there are shrubs?
There, there's some kind of a shrub, yeah. They are meant, according to the person who donated them, they're meant to be for privacy use, and they're, they grow quite full, at least in the summertime. In the wintertime, like right now, they don't have much leaves on them, so I'm assuming in the wintertime they wouldn't have leaves. But in any event, it's some kind of a decorative, she thought, fruit tree, like a cherry or a plum, which is something similar to what she has. That's just our guess. The owner didn't really seem to have much information, except he knew it was a shrub and not a tree, and he wanted a tree, so, or trees. So, in any event, but we did feel that it wasn't, it probably would make sense to put it at McMurphy Park because these would need regular watering and things, and so we figured it would probably have to be at Warden Park where it could be taken care of, where they could be taken care of, so, I don't know.
Okay, all right. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It doesn't need to require any damn little action, but, so we went from playground equipment to six shrubs. We'll take what we get, okay? All right, that concludes the mayor's report, so let's proceed with council reports. Do any members of council have any topic they'd like to share with other members? Very none, let's proceed with our council, I mean, our agenda approval. For tonight's agenda, I don't have...
I gave everybody a new agenda from what they picked up previously because one item needs to be removed. It is not ready for approval. So, one of the parties involved with that agreement has not agreed to sign it. So council doesn't need to review it at this point or approve it. So until that happens...
So we can delete item...
We need to delete item three when we do the agenda approval.
Okay. I would await council action.
Okay. Go ahead. Make a motion to approve city council agenda for September 8, 2016, with number three removed.
Okay. Mr. Parsons has submitted a motion for your consideration to approve the agenda with one change involving the deletion of item number three. So, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Krier. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Now the approval of the minutes from our previous city council meeting from August 25th.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from August 25th, 2016.
Okay. Heard the motion submitted by Mr. Parsons. To approve those meeting minutes as noted, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried without your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the 1st of September 2016 in the amount of $16,673.04.
Okay. Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve the vouchers as noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Krier. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Special report, I'm not aware of any special report on this evening's agenda. Public comment?
Although this is the first council meeting, the sheriff may have something, but he's on the phone right now.
Well, let's see what's on our public comment, and maybe we should come back to that.
No one has signed up.
Okay. All right, then, if the council doesn't mind, when our deputy returns, we sort of see if he has a report prepared. But if you don't mind, I proceed with our city business. Yeah, cool. Deputy Cheeseman, we were wondering if you had a report for us.
Yes, for August. She's got her pen ready. Total contacts was 234. The total calls for the month was 27. Had 14 traffic stops, and then we ended up with two arrests. One was a DV arrest, that's mandatory, and then we had another malicious mischief deal that was taken care of. And there wasn't, oh, I should say, I did look, just to look, that, you know, your total calls for the year so far are 173, and I looked clean back to 2013, and you're right in the same ballpark, 170 for this, this time of the year, so.
Interesting.
So you haven't had any increase in calls or anything like that, so. One of the things, I know one of the things you guys talk about about the park, I noticed that you leave the gate open at night. Now, the county parks that we have, we close the gates at night. People can still walk in, but it stops the traffic from going inside there. And I don't know whether you have availability for someone to just go there and close that gate at night and stop that traffic, but the guys have been really emphasizing and patrolling down there, and we haven't caught anybody there, you know, at night late, even though we get reports of people, but we haven't caught anybody. They, that's a, that's a normal checkup, almost, you know, on the hour type of deal, and they haven't really had any problems down there. But you might think about, I know it's coming up, I don't know when you start closing it for the winter.
In October.
In October, so you only got another month, that basically, and then you're going to close it anyhow, so.
Something they talked about when I was on the park board, closing it every night, and it was a cumbersome deal.
Yeah.
You know, closing it and then getting there in the morning for people to enjoy the park, so it's something that has been talked about, but it's...
Yeah, the county pays for someone to do both of our parks, the one up north and the one, and so, in fact, they even close it and lock cars inside that are inside there that still. And so we have to end up going out at night when they get back, especially up at Shaver Park, because they'll be out inner tubing during the summertime. So then they'll call up and say, oh, their car's locked behind the gate, so we got to go up and let them back out. But, yeah, we have someone, the minute it gets dusk, they close the gates and lock them, so.
Dusk is considered when the sun has set.
Yeah. So any questions?
I did have one quick question.
Sure.
Yesterday, I was asked to go look at some graffiti that was on a building.
Oh, okay.
I think we reported that to you, but would that be something that your, okay.
Oh, okay.
Would that be something that your office would look at?
Yeah, it depends. We do have, there is a gang task force in the county, which is between Centraye, Shalys, and the sheriff's office. If the graffiti does look like it is gang-related, they'll be able, we can be able to tell you if it is or not, and what, maybe there was someone passing through or whatever there, but if it's just normal graffiti that someone, some kid's painting or something like that, then, yeah.
It's profanity.
It would be, it would be, then it would be basically, the person that has the property can report it as malicious mischief.
Okay.
What if it's the property owner themselves who may have put it on there, but it's...
Oh.
It's inappropriate language.
Oh.
That's more the case, I think.
That's speculation.
That's speculation.
Oh, yeah. That would be a toughie, because, yeah, you can put, as long as you're not, as long as you are not threatening somebody else, like you're going, you know, you're saying, I'm going to kill John Smith. That, you know, if you put that up there, that's a threat, that could be harassment, felony harassment type of deal. But if you're just putting it up there to the world that you're putting out, I think it's just like, it's like freedom on Facebook, you can put whatever you want to.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, good to know.
Okay.
Thank you. Right, well, now, let's officially proceed with our city business. Item number one, I'll call your attention to the letter that's been prepared for council members. Hopefully, you have a chance to review it. The individual that I'm suggesting or submitting to you for your confirmation is Ken Jocelyn. He's been in our community for probably a year, year and a half, a fine fellow, is interested in the betterment of the community, and has seemed to be sincere in his willingness to do what he could to help improve and sustain our parks. He has a lot of experience, he's got access to equipment, and is healthy and young and capable of engaging hands-on approach if necessary, so I...
Is this, is this who we're trying to fill the chairman position?
Well, I think that's what, you know, I was hoping to accomplish with this particular nomination, but they will decide.
Yeah, the park board will have to choose their own chairperson.
But my sense was, you wondered if he had the attributes and character to do that, and he does. So I'm just sharing that. But that would mean, right, at this moment in time, we would have three members, so we're still, that's enough for a quorum, but we're still two members shy. It's supposed to be five on the park board. So, with this particular action, I invite you to engage in appropriate...
I think that leaves four.
Four.
We have Steve, Polo, and Brandon.
Oh, forgot about Polo. Well, that's good.
And then Ken Jocelyn would be four.
Well, thank you for trying to find that. Good, because we have a, if you're acquainted with somebody you think would be a worthy candidate for it, please let me know. But I do have some individuals that I'll be contacting, but your input is always welcome. Okay, so with that, I'm prepared to submit this person to you for your action.
Well, based on the mayor's feedback, I'd like to give Mr. Jocelyn a nomination for the park board.
Okay, so Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve Ken Jocelyn as a new member of the Vader City Park Board. Do we have a second for that motion?
Well, seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Then, any other commentary?
I just wish Mr. Jocelyn was here to introduce himself.
Yeah, his work schedule is challenging. He works in Longview, and...
Is that going to work for the park board?
Yeah, if, they can meet on Monday night or Saturdays. But I told him there was flexibility.
They've traditionally met on Monday.
Monday nights, yeah.
Yeah, so, but, yeah, but, but his employment is a complication, that's in long hours. So, any other observations during that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
I'd like to meet him before I aye.
Okay, well, good, but I did hear three votes to the affirmative, so that is sufficient to carry the, to approve the motion. So that motion is carried. I will invite him to come at our next council meeting, introduce himself to you. All right, next item, council to consider Resolution 14-2016, Engineering Services Contract for Waste Water Treatment Facility Plan Amendment. You'll recall, I'm sure from our last meeting, that we were awaiting this document from the individual whose services were approved, and it gave me authorization to proceed forward with, that would be Civil West Engineering Services. They've provided this document to review it, and I'm fully sympathetic to the fact that you probably have not had much time to review this. And you'll recall that we were dating in this entire project with considerable urgency because we were anticipating the loss of our design funding in June of 2017. But I would remind the council members that it appears that we will likely get a 12-month extension to that deadline. And so we have until June of 2018, more than likely, which means that we don't have as much time urgency on this process. So if you were inclined to want to read it and address the matter next, that would be okay too, just so you know. But I don't want to excessively influence council. I am, I will put as an editorial observation, in the many years that I've been involved with this process, I've been very impressed with the representative of Civil West Engineering Services. They seem to be very knowledgeable, articulate, and I was impressed with the contents of his package, and so I felt very good about it. So, with that, I won't say anymore to exert any more influence on the council members than I already have. I think the document speaks for itself.
Do you feel the proposed budget price that they gave us is a fair, is a fair number?
That is an excellent question. The city park and myself have been wrestling with that, and we've contacted him. Would you like to share some of the observations that you shared with me, having reached out to him, as we wanted you to do, to pose four questions to him?
Yes, I don't have those four questions in front of me. I'll try to remember the ones that I talked to him about.
I think I can remember.
Number, task number three, if you go to the scope of work pages, it starts out with the Civil West logo on it. It's got the little Civil West logo on the upper, it's exhibit A. Task number three that says...
Three, four.
...consideration of interim wastewater treatment measures at the bottom of the page. Can you guys see where I'm at? So, there's, the initial part of the document is two pages of resolution, and then there's the contract that goes for five pages, and then, then starts the scope of services, okay, then the next page, section three at the bottom, or task three at the bottom. Consideration of interim wastewater treatment measures. I asked about this and whether this was necessary. Basically, what he's saying is, as a task, that they would evaluate whether using a technology like the Blue Frog aerators would, if that would benefit the city with enough, enough benefit to the city to make it affect the cost of our long-term waste treatment. So basically, these, these aerators by Blue Frog claim to be able to dissolve and, whatever, almost all the sludge that's in the ponds, which is that, the heavy thick layer at the bottom. And the question is, if we did that, just that inserted those now, before the waste treatment upgrade was ready and designed, if we just inserted that now, would that actually be able to provide enough sludge removal to save us money when we do the waste treatment plant upgrade? Because we know we're going to have to remove that sludge one way or another. We can pay to do it, but have it removed by machine, or Blue Frog is saying they may be able to, you know, through the cost of their aerators, be able to help us dissolve that ourselves, so that we don't have the hundreds of thousands of dollars in sludge removal. So basically, this is, he's saying we would, we are willing to look into evaluating to see if that really would be of any kind of cost benefit to the city to do that at this point, or whether it really would save the city any money to do that, so.
Yeah, it sounds like something that, just kind of an add-on to...
Right, it's something that the city has asked about initially, and so that's why he's included it in here, is because we've talked about possibly using the Blue Frog technologies as part of the upgrade that we do finally, and he says that, he said he may look into it and find that it will benefit us now, and that it will continue to be benefit to keep as part of the full upgrade that we do. He says, but he has to look into it to see, he's not sure. And so, that's one of the things the city asked him to look at, but that he said he's going to do some initial numbers, and if, if it doesn't look like it's going to save us really any money, then he'll stop, and he won't spend any more time on that, and...
Does, does Blue Frog have any type of, like, if we buy those aerators, do they have any type of guarantee, or...
That I don't know. I do know that they, that you can buy them or rent them, and if you rent them, then decide later that you want to buy, then they give you credit for the renting of the equipment. But again, it all depends on whether they can do what Blue Frog thinks they can do. And so that's what the engineer has to check into and see if they really can do that.
It's almost...
Sounds, sounds really good if it would work.
Yeah, and almost too good to be true.
Yeah.
But we'd still have to work with the liners.
Sure.
Ecology is going to require that we reline those, so, but if you have to ship out or, you know, process and...
Scoop out?
Scoop out.
Less material.
Bet you.
Just save a lot of money. A thousand dollars in, in excavator costs and dump truck fees and...
Exactly.
Well, this is a relatively small amount of money.
It is.
Compared to our project, for the chance of saving an enormous amount of money.
What is the cost of it?
On page four, there's a breakdown on the left page there, item three.
That's the consideration of...
It's allotting thirty-four hundred and fifty-eight dollars for...
The purchase of them?
No, that would be his review, if he did a whole review and, you know, made and, and determined, and determination. It may not take that much time for him to determine whether it's workable or not, so...
So, for me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but for me, if we have a company that's going to sell us a product, and they're saying it's going to work, and then we pay an engineer to tell us if, if it's going to work, an extra three thousand dollars? Does that make...
Yeah, but this Blue Frog thing is like hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, but if, like I was saying, if they've got some type of warranty, why, I mean, okay, we'll let you put it in there, if it doesn't work, then we're in square one, aren't we?
Well, I think that you rely on the engineer, and he's going to charge this stated amount, or less, depending on what the actual costs are, to assess the product. And like he said at the end of that particular paragraph, that he'll work with the vendors to apply any rental fees to the purchase of the technology. And so, my sense was, and maybe I'm wrong on this, is that he talked to, using Blue Frog as an example, to perhaps renting one of their aerators, and then doing some analysis of the impact that that particular aerator would have on our system. So, you can yet to experiment with it in place, which would be better than speculation. And so, for me, I thought it was an innovative concept, and I thought his price was fair. I mean, these guys, you...
No, I, I thought we were going to be proposed with a, a proposal before we spent this amount of money.
Well, all of this would accrue in the course of doing his, the project you're going to get is his analysis and evaluation of alternatives that he will propose that would be cheaper and effective for the community. So, this, to me, seems like a reasonable amount, although there are some figures that, one in particular that we'd get to, four questions.
So, Jason, I just want to clarify, are you unclear about what is being proposed here for this amount of money, or?
Well, when we were offered those five different booklets, and we were told that this is the one that we should look at, we, we were also told that we were able to be proposed by this person, and then let us know if we were going to...
Right, so...
But I thought we were going to have to spend over twenty-three thousand dollars in order to get that proposal.
I'm sorry, yeah, that is, that is, it takes...
So, that's, that's just where it is.
Yes, that, this proposal that you see is the amount of time it's going to take him and his business associates to compile that, all that engineering information together on several different options. He's going to kind of do it in phases. He'll start out with, he'll have an initial meeting with the city and make sure he understands what ideas the city wants him to look at initially, so he'll do an initial assessment of many, maybe up to about ten different options and ideas, and he'll do initial assessments on those. And with those initial assessments, he'll look at cost and the, the ability that they have to, to do what we need them to do, to accomplish, and then he'll bring that to the city.
Are those assessments something that we can be a part of?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. He will have a meeting here with the city, and you guys can all be involved if you want. And when they, he, this is partway through this process, then, when he has kind of that initial assessment, he'll come and talk to the city, being the council, and say, okay, which three or four ideas do you think we should really focus on and do a detailed report on what these numbers are really going to look like? And then, so then, you guys would have the opportunity at that point to say, okay, these ones look like in the right cost range, these ones look like the type thing that we want for our city. And then, he would take those three or four options and do, and finish doing a complete report on those particular options, and then that's the final product that he has, that's the facility plan.
Is this, is this something that we have grant money to help pay it?
It's half grant, half loan right now, yeah. We have the money funded, half of it we will have to pay back over time. I think it's a twenty-year loan that we have on it. Half of it is grant, so...
So, you've cut this in half, yes, so you already have half.
Right. So, we did the same process with the last engineers, but didn't come up with any innovative results or things.
Twice as much.
Right, right, and so, that's why we're trying one more time to get somebody with a little bit different perspective, and hopefully more ideas, which is what we're...
So, the final product that we get from him, is it a plan, or is it the...
It's a facility, it's a paper document that has the most, the, the three or four most reasonable, I'm trying to think what the right word is that they use.
Alternatives.
Alternatives.
But they'll all be at a different price, and it'll all be a little bit...
And as he continues to work on it, he continues to communicate and have meetings with the city, and, you know, let you know what his findings are, and by the time we get to the end, we'll generally have one alternative that will be the preferred alternative. We'll have a couple other options there as well, but we'll have one that appears to be the preferred alternative. And, but it has to, it's something that the council does together with the engineers, he works through this process.
Will we be able to go and walk through the plant with him at the time too, so...
Um, there's not a plant to walk through at that time.
Oh.
He's just, he's just coming up with ideas.
Okay.
And putting it on paper. Once the plan is complete, and the council says, okay, we like this, we want to go and use this alternative, then we have another engineering firm, or the same engineering firm, actually draw a, a physical design of the plant with specific specifications, like a building plan, like a house, like an architect would build.
So, this just gives us our ideas.
Yeah, that's, that's not part of it, this, this is just...
That's the next, that's the design phase.
Yeah.
And then after the design, then is the bill. But we just haven't been able to get past this planned phase to get to the design phase with, with a system that will work for the community cost-wise and...
I told my son he needed to become an engineer.
Thank you. Jill, let me quickly add, we do have a comment in public, but let me quickly add here that as a takeaway from our last meeting, I sense the concern you've got. This is his proposal. You still have the right and authority to reject this proposal. You can challenge the amounts. I, I'm, I'm a little pressed for time here, so I don't want to do a Reader's Digest version of this whole, yeah, because we could hold off on this discussion at our next council meeting if we chose to. But item number five is one that Jill and I were wrestling with, the alternatives evaluation. He's put thirty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars on that, and he indicated he'd go back and review the previous alternatives, however many he deems appropriate. And our thought was, well, we don't necessarily want him to go back.
Yeah, we don't want to go backwards.
Yeah, and then, Bella's unspecified amount for that. And so, you did ask him about that concern, right? What did he say?
Um, the reason he included that was because in our telephone conference with Greg Zentner, Department of Ecology, Greg said that he felt that we needed to go back and have this engineering firm review those options.
So, it was Ecology that was kind of prompting him to put that...
Ecology said that that's something that, yes.
But with that having been said, bear in mind that this representative, this engineer from Civil West is inviting your input and feedback. Obviously, I, I would probably be content if you were sitting here, that these are, in his mind, are accurate figures. And in my mind, I can, they seem reasonable to me, but you're tasked to make decisions regarding financial matters. And so, there is some responsibility on your shoulders to engage in that. But I think you'd find that he's reasonable and wants to hear your concerns. So, with that, we have a member of the public, would you like to hear input from the public?
Well, I would like to know the hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we spent already, does that being presented to them, that this is not what we want, so he doesn't have to go there and spend money on it?
Yeah, that was the very question that we just posed with him. Ecology said that they want him to look at some of the previous alternatives. But let me be clear here, that he's inserted in this issues, strategies, alternatives that none of the other engineers have ever mentioned. So, that alone sets this individual and this company apart. So, and obviously, his estimated costs are considerably less than anybody else has done, and his timeline is, in my mind, amazing. And he seems to be a doer, and if he can meet those deadlines, that would more than fill our, need at the time, emergency. But now, there's not as much urgency as there was. So, anyway, I...
You, you might also note that just because Ecology wants us to do the review of those old alternative, doesn't mean that the council has to do that. That's not a regulation, that's a recommendation. In Ecology's mind, they would like to see Civil West's review of those. Now, council can say, no way, we're not doing that, we're not spending the money on it, forget it, and scratch it off. Or you can say, I don't want them to spend that much time doing it, I want, you know, them to do a much more brief review, or, you know, you guys can make those, those decisions.
Okay, well, then, I think that's probably all the input that I would share with you this evening.
Yeah, I would like Civil West, like what Jill was saying, to spend less time looking at those many multimillion dollar plans that we've already seen and chosen, chosen not to go with, for good reason. If Ecology wants those reviewed...
They can pay for it.
They can pay for it, exactly.
Yeah, they got us into this position, changing the...
We already have those on paper, if we want to use one, we've got it already.
Yeah.
So...
So, do you want, can you give me a little bit more direction than less time? Do you want to say half, do you want to say quarter, none, on that task five?
Yeah, you know, it's just, I, I don't know.
A third, a third whatever it was going to do.
One third.
One third, one third of that, of that thirty-six thousand dollar number.
Okay.
That's the biggest, we had three plans.
Biggest number on there.
We had three plans, right?
Right.
That's what we had before.
It doesn't put us forward at all.
The previous engineering firm gave us, if I remember correctly, we gave us three plans. And so, and they were all about the same. I mean, they were all, they were all the same kind of idea, so...
I mean, we're going to give him some to look back into it, so I mean, and he'll, he'll see how absurd, or maybe not how absurd they are, maybe one of those plans could, could lead him to thinking of another plan, so...
Yeah, they were all six million dollars, they were all, build a giant concrete bunker down there, you know, they were, they were all the same, so...
But with that amendment, I think that we should make a resolution to accept the...
Are you putting this point of the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the Resolution fourteen, two thousand and sixteen, for the Engineering Service Contract for Waste Water Treatment Facility Plan Amendment, with the amendment number five, with the amount of money given to the alternative evaluations.
Okay. All right, I think I've captured it. Mr. Daley submitted a motion for the council consideration to approve Resolution number fourteen dash two thousand and sixteen, with the noted contingent reduction on item number five, to reduce his previous alternatives by two-thirds, and select one of those three for additional analysis. And with the effort being...
Is that what he's, is that what you're saying, that you want him to just select one alternative, or just reduce the amount to twelve thousand?
Oh, just reduce the amount to...
To twelve thousand.
Okay, well, I guess that was...
Let him determine how, how that's spent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, with the ultimate outcome, be reduced the ultimate outlay of item number five. Is that...
Yes.
Okay. And with that, do we have a second for that?
Okay.
Executed by Mrs. Krieger. Do we have additional commentary?
Yes. Are we sure that item number five, that full amount, was simply to review the past alternatives? Or is that amount to consider all alternat, all, all alternatives as well as the past alternatives?
Well, then, do you see, do you see item number five, where he's described what it means? It's on page three. You read the first sentence.
This is, this is the general review.
If you look on the page, it looks like this, so, keep going.
Yeah.
Yeah, it gives you a breakdown of each task. Task five, alternative, alternative evaluation. It tells you how much time and how much the cost is for each step of that. So, he is evaluating some new alternatives, like the INI on our collection system, and develop new treatment alternatives not previously considered.
It doesn't show that he's going back at all.
Yeah, this is just the new alternative.
Evaluation of exist, oh, I'm sorry, that would be number four then, on his list. I think his list is wrong. So, he'd be evaluating existing criteria.
Come on, he's an engineer, isn't he going to have...
I think that was number four.
Okay. Now, that number would make more sense.
Okay, task number four.
Well, I'm sure we've discussed this, because it helps me to prophesy on what we'd say.
Yes, evaluation of existing previous planning criteria is only thirty-one hundred dollars. So, that is the one we're talking, that, not task five.
Item, item five is what we want. Five is finding things we don't yet know.
We want you to do this without doing it.
That's, that's the meat and potatoes of the deal right there.
This is important, their clarification here, very important. So, I'm not sure we're going to be able to reduce thirty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's like, like Joe says, that's the meat and potatoes, that's, that's, that's what they're going to be spending their money on, trying to find the, the alternatives there.
Mm-hmm. But, but the motion, as indicated, would be in an effort to reduce the cost of the previous alternative analysis and...
But we thought that the alternative analysis was thirty-six thousand.
Yeah.
So, either we need to go for...
Might want to withdraw the motion at this moment in time, and you're the only one who can do that.
Yes, let's, after previous discussion and clarification, let's withdraw the last motion.
Okay. And so, Mr. Daley has requested that his previous motion be withdrawn. Would you care to submit a subsequent motion with articulating a new approach to things?
Me?
Anybody?
Oh, I made a motion that we... Oh, I made a motion that we, we approved resolution number fourteen, two thousand and sixteen, as, as written.
I'll second that.
But did you not want to authorize the mayor to discern whether or not we could reduce it by the thirty-one hundred dollars? And item four, the line item, or not?
I, yeah, I think that if we can have it reduced somehow by not letting them spend that money looking backwards, that would be.
Okay, all right. And then together, the motion was to approve the resolution as written, a contention upon an effort to reduce that particular line item involving re-evaluation of previous alternatives.
So for clarification, are we saying that if you cannot reduce it, then it does not pass? Or you're just going to?
Contingent upon an effort.
Give them, okay. So you, so you're just going to, they're authorizing you to try, right? But if it doesn't work, we're still going forward with it. Is that correct? Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay. All right. Then hearing that motion, we did get a second.
I'll still second it.
Mr. Chey, sorry. Is there any additional comment from other council members? I'll just put it to a vote. All in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I'd like to make, as a matter of public record, a personal commendation from the mayor to the council for your expeditious handling of this matter. Very impressive. Point three. Okay, item number three. The council to consider voluntary.
That one was taken off.
Do you remove that one?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did, I had it all. All right. Get my notes in there. Okay. Council to consider two thousand and seventeen budget calendar. Now I have all your attention, calendar. There you have it. I've reviewed it and pleased to recommend it to you. There are a couple of dates that you might want council consideration, but for the most part, I, I believe that it's a workable budget calendar that.
Give a quick explanation?
Yes.
Okay. Our two council meetings in October, on the sixth and the twentieth, those are regular council meetings, and we, we can handle the items for the two thousand and seventeen budget that need to be handled during those meetings. So what I did include was on the twentieth, having a budget workshop at five o'clock, so the hour before. If that works for everybody, we'll be going through revenues and talking about the property tax and things like that, so if you guys can approve that workshop. You're not required to have a workshop, but it's a good idea to have workshops where we can talk and discuss and ask questions. In November, our two council meetings are normally scheduled on the tenth and the twenty-fourth. The twenty-fourth is Thanksgiving. So what we've done in years past is bumped that meeting and held a special meeting on the seventeenth instead of on Thanksgiving Day. And so that's what I have penciled in here. We do need to have a property tax levy approved and set before the end of November, so that gives us enough time, I guess.
So in October, we're having our meetings on the first and the third.
Oh, did I have them on the wrong dates?
Yes.
Oh, you're right, I do. Sorry, thank you for that. Nope, it would be the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh. You're right.
Well, I missed that.
You're right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, great, thanks for that.
Is that when the workshops will be also?
The workshop, there will be one workshop on, an hour before the council meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
So that would be at five o'clock. I'll give you a finalized copy once council approves all of this, but with all the corrections. So on the tenth, we will, I have another budget workshop scheduled for an hour before council meeting. So if council wants to do that, you guys can decide to cancel that later on if you don't want to do it, but it's just a workshop that I threw in there, put it in. You usually want to have a couple workshops through this season. The seventeenth, holding that, holding a council meeting on the seventeenth instead of the twenty-fourth and using that meeting specifically to set the tax levy that has to be set before the end of the month. We can address other things as well during that special meeting, but that has to be done before the end of the month. Then jumping down to December, again, our regularly scheduled council meetings would be the eighth and the twenty-second. The twenty-second usually is right near Christmas, so we often choose one of these other dates that you see either the first or the fifteenth to move that meeting to and, and do our public hearings and, and final budget assessments during one of those. So I guess I would need direction from council. Would you like to, would you like to move that meeting from the twenty-second to one of the earlier dates?
Can we, can we do December first and fifteen? Then it stays in the two weeks apart?
You can choose to do that, yeah. You can choose to do that if you want. And hold a special meeting on the first and a special meeting on the fifteenth and then cancel the eighth and the twenty-second. Yeah? You guys can do it however you want to do it.
I see, so two.
I will be unavailable on the fifteenth, but I'm just one person. You guys can carry on without me.
Mrs. Krieger, do you have?
I would prefer the first and the eighth, but I'll make it work if we have to do the fifteenth.
I'm open to all of it, so I can do the first and the eighth, and that would save both of you.
So we get three out of four.
I'm, I'm open whatever.
Me too. I'm available first and the eighth.
That will, that will actually probably work out good because then if for some reason something comes up and we're not able to get the budget passed by the eighth and we need more time, we can still hold one, you can call one on the fifteenth at that time if you need to.
An emergency.
For emergency. But hopefully, usually we're able to get it taken care of by then, but.
For those of you who are new, this might seem complex and complicated, and it is somewhat, but the budget is prepared by the city clerk and the mayor presents it to you, and it's usually pretty finely tuned by the time you get it. We won't submit it to you if we're not confident about it. And so it's pretty straightforward in that sense, but you will have the final say on the nuances of the budget. So the mayor, with the city clerk's obvious assistance, submits to you the proposed budget for two thousand and seventeen. You just get to tweak it and change it as inspiration guides you. Okay, does that make sense? So don't be overwhelmed by all these changes.
So I don't need a motion tonight, I just need your direction, and I will prepare the final budget schedule for you to approve at the next council meeting.
When is October third again? Estimates and projections?
October third. Estimates and projections, oh, that is when estimates and projections are due to me from the department heads.
Okay, because I'll be gone that week, so.
Yeah, no, you don't have to do anything, that's, that's just when they have to, if, if we had any department heads, they would provide their estimates and projections to me by that date.
All right.
So what I'm seeing is we'll have in October the regular scheduled meetings on the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, and scheduling a budget workshop on the twenty-seventh, an hour before council meeting. And then in November, holding the regularly scheduled budget or scheduled meeting on the tenth, and a workshop scheduled an hour before that one as well, and then canceling the twenty-fourth and holding a special meeting on the seventeenth, as depicted there. And then in December, canceling the meeting on the twenty-second and holding two meetings, one on the first and one on the eighth.
Yep, oh, yep.
And then we'll hold the fifteenth in advance in case we need it. If we do for some reason, it'll be there.
Okay.
So does that sound right to everybody? Okay, so I'll finalize this and have it for you guys to pass the motion at the next meeting.
Excellent. All right, let's go to item number five, update on street improvement projects. I don't believe that I have anything in particular that we didn't add last week.
The, I will add that our transportation improvement board grant was submitted, and we'll find out the results on November eighteenth, is when the, the state reviews those submissions. And as far as our own paving projects in town, the city solicited for a third bid that we need to have before we can officially choose a provider for paving. And it's my understanding we didn't get any responses back, we have two bids already. So today I've personally contacted some other companies to get that third bid, so I should have those for you in two weeks.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for that update. Obviously, well, let's hope that we can move on our next meeting to take advantage of the dry season. So before weather nature throws a monkey wrench in our paving plans. Okay, item number six, final item, council discussion on speed limits in city of Bay. It was brought up at our last meeting, the concerns about, yes, the first.
Yeah, I brought it up, I didn't even notice that it was on there.
How? How do you like that? That's responsive. So any additional council discussion?
Um, I don't know, were you all here? I, we're not. We were talking about this, um, speed limits in Vader as twenty-five going down Tenth Street, or actually any street, twenty-five is fast. And why not make it fifteen? Let me just slow it all down and we have the, for the most part, everybody does about ten to fifteen anyway, except for a few select that think that thirty and forty is good on off-street or whatever. And I don't know if it's true or not, but it might end up even bringing us in a little bit more revenue. And every now and then, I might be the one to donate some of that revenue, but still, it's just a thought. I know that we were talking about the stop sign on D Street, or that got approved, and instead of, instead of stopping, because I know that the stop sign on F Street going on the Tenth Street, that's, it, stop signs cause a lot of noise from the acceleration of the cars. And so, you know, you're going to get, if we put stop signs everywhere, you're going to get the, the pulling up to stop and then the acceleration away and instead of just a.
I think the only place was on D Street.
Was D Street, yeah. But it was just something that I just kind of threw out there and.
Well, that's the privilege of being on the council. Any thoughts?
I have heard some concern on the amount of the speed of people in town, but mostly just on D Street and, and Eighth Street going out of town, that main thoroughfare, you know, it's twenty-five, everybody goes thirty-five.
Well, I think the speed on D Street would probably slow down at the stop sign if there's a, because in your stop sign, stop sign. I actually, close your ears. When the different speeds coming down here and a little over twenty-five, a little, I'm more leaning towards twenty than fifteen, but so that's just my personal opinion. Because even when I go from home to the fire station, I go more than fifteen, but I don't go twenty-five, but.
Our streets are kind of like driveways.
They are.
So you.
So, but that's just, that's my personal opinion, I would lean more towards twenty. So, but I do think the, the speed will slow down on D Street, definitely.
Okay. Well, any other comments?
I'd be in support of lowering the overall speed limit, twenty miles an hour is perfectly reasonable speed.
I think so. I think one of the, one of the problems is they come off the, the highway, you know?
Right.
Fifty everywhere and thirty-five in the town, they're still into that thirty-five mode because they don't have to slow down because it's into like a city mode in their head, so.
Yeah.
But something to consider, have to see what people think.
The council, care to give it additional thought and address it more at our next council meeting?
Yeah.
All right. And with that, thank you for your input. And then that completes the agenda items, so I would, we'd carry the council adjourned at seven oh two, seven oh six.